Okay. Ladies and... Whoa! (laughing) Okay, okay, I think we've got the sound sorted out. So if I can ask people to take a seat. Thank you very much indeed. Good evening, everyone. Today's meeting is open to the public. A warm welcome to you all. Thank you all for coming. My name is Simon Clement-Jones and I am the Chair of this local area committee. Before I ask the other councillors around the room to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to Joanne to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Oh, no, it isn't. Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The fire exits are through the main door there and out that door over there, the assembly points in the car park. Toilet facilities are on the left and right of the door as you come in. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live. We will be starting the webcast, I presume, Dave, after the first session?
Yep.
And will be broadcast subsequently on the council's website. You should be aware that the council has data control under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room in person or online, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. If I can ask the councillors around the room to introduce themselves, starting with Steve and then going round that way. I think we've got everyone there. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd just like to explain how the meeting will work tonight. We're going to start with an informal discussion on children and young people. We'll then have a talk from Pat Mulley on the play partnership, after which we'll have a presentation from Sharrow Community Forum on their youth investment fund project. Then we'll move on to the formal part of the meeting, such as apologies, declarations, and the LAC manager, Dave, will bring a finance report for agreement by the LAC. Then we'll take any public questions if we have time. If I can now hand over to Dave, who will explain how this next session will work.
Thank you, Chair. So, as you can see, you may have been to some of our meetings before and you may have come to meetings where we're all set out in rows and councillors are sat in a big long line. And what we're doing is experimenting with having a format where we can hear from a lot more of you throughout the session and kind of explore a topic a little more. So, for the first half of the meeting, we have got four kind of stations that are set up. So we've got one which is around early years, nought to fives and play, one here which is around youth activities and support, one which is around gaps in terms of provision for young people, particularly thinking about junior play but any sort of gaps, and then the other table there around possibly more general issues and about making the South a healthy place to live and to grow up in. And so the idea is, for the first part, until about 6.45, you may want to spend all of your time at one of those tables, you may want to move around them, there will be people there to kind of start those discussions in terms of hearing from you, particularly around what's happening now that people can know about and learn about, what are the things that we need to do better or grow. So we really want to have that space to consider how we can develop activities, particularly for children and young people. And at the table at the back, the Healthy Places Group, there is the opportunity to do one of our LAC surveys that we've just launched, which is about asking people how they find living in the South of Sheffield. So we would invite you to take part in those conversations, move around the tables as works for you, until about 6.45. Then we will kind of call everyone back, we'll have a little bit of feedback from the tables, and then as the Chair has explained, we'll have the more formal part of the meeting where we have a couple of presentations and where we have, you know, the budget report and we accept the minutes and so forth. In terms of the space, we've got lots of space and we've got lots of chairs, so we'll make sure that everyone's got a chair and is able to fit into whichever discussion they want to be a part of. On one very practical issue, this is a lovely building, quite a characterful building, and you may find during this, if you struggle with the acoustics of the building, then I would ask that you would mention that to your facilitator. And if we need to help you, for example, to be closer or to think about how we're conducting those conversations so everyone can hear well, please don't be shy about that, please mention that to the person who's facilitating your table. So, thank you for coming. By all means, take a moment or two to figure out where you want to be, make sure you've got a chair, join the discussion, and then at any point feel free to move around the tables. And as I say, at about 6.45, we'll take a little bit of feedback and we'll draw us back together to do the other elements of the meeting. If you've not signed in, please do. If you'd like a drink now or at any point, then please do help yourselves. So please now, if you could join in one of those conversations, and like I say, if you then feel that you're ready to move on to a different one, then by all means, please do. Thank you.
So, Paul, if you want to tell us just one or two things that particularly stood out from your table, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got some excellent notes here, we've got lots of stuff and a great conversation going on, highlighting good things that are happening, but also how they could be better, and identifying the gaps, which was our task. We discussed things where consistency of provision is required to gain trust, and that needs professional youth workers, which of course then means we need that pipeline of graduate youth workers, which we don't have anymore since the colleges pulled the courses a few years ago. And we also need the spaces, the buildings are really useful. We talked about how the provision in Sharrow is there, it's open, is it four or five days a week? And so it's not just like, oh, it's six till eight, Wednesday, let's go down to the youth club. You know, you can go down there and there'll be people who you recognise and trust, and that consistency really is important for that kind of thing. Funding and skills, again, it's just really important if we're going to develop consistent provision that people know they're going to be able to access without having an invite or without knowing it's on and without being aware that this thing is on that's for their age group and that they're allowed to go and so on and so forth, that it is consistent and it's reliable and it's there all the time. So that means investment in areas and spaces that may be safe, but also to make them safe. There isn't enough indoor space in our ward around Gleedless, and it's well oversubscribed what there is. But then also, we talked about if there's public spaces, that we work on them and we develop them and we get the young people to do that work so that it's theirs and they own it, and that way it's protected and it's a place where they can go and feel safe. Sorry, there's tonnes of notes, I'm trying to pick out some highlights but I'm probably missing out on stuff. So another thing that I thought was a really interesting thing that was suggested is about gaps in send provision, where there is some provision for young people who ascend, but it tends to be more of a citywide thing, so there might be something in one area, like there is something in Gleedless Valley for young people who ascend, but those kids come from different parts of the city, it's not just for local people. And actually, I'm not even sure if any local people attend it at all, but you know, it's a good provision, but it's just not local and there's not enough of it. And of course, the other thing, I'll finish on this even though there is more to it that I could talk about, is the support for parents as well. And quite often, you know, if a young person, the young people who would most benefit from youth provision, whether it's mainstream or informal or specifically around send, often it's the parents that have got the same troubles as well. And so to provide support for parents to kind of help to break the cycle by including the parents so that the children are included. I think we found that the more we talked, the more kind of challenges there were, but I think there's also a really good picture here on what I have in front of me of, there's lessons, there's direction to be picked out of these notes, I think, so hopefully we can compile them and come up with something coherent that we will be able to work to. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Ade, is there anyone from your table or would you just like to tell us a couple of particular standout things? Because just to be clear, we will take this away, we will type it all up, and we're really conscious that the Gleedless Valley Partnership meeting, I've already been doing some really good local work, and some of the stuff that's on your tables is trying to build in some of that feedback that we've already had. So just a process of building a picture, but we will take everything back that you've shared with us today.
Okay, so I'll keep it short and sweet, very similar to what Paul mentioned. We looked at youth support and obviously that's from 11 years plus. We noticed a significant drop, like a significant lack of provision in Gleedless Valley. There needs to be a community space for young people to have that sense of belonging and to know that it's theirs. A suggestion was, when it gets to obviously term time, to have something that could run during the six weeks holidays, something in the evening for young people, that they can do activities indoor. We also spoke about the competitive nature of funding support and how that can really strain other groups applying for funding to support young people. Sarah over at Healy City Farm also mentioned it would be great to have more paid opportunities and work experience for young people that take part in their employment hub as well. And they do great work there, but one of the things as well that also can cause a strain is, before a young person feels confident to actually go and take part in the employment hub, there are like 10 steps before that, so that's extra work for them to then kind of support the young person on their journey. So it's having that holistic approach. And the lack of SEND needs as well for young people, that would be neurodiverse and have other different things that they need support with. Yeah, that was the main sort of thing on our table. But lots of passion and we just need to come together and get something done. Thank you.
Just going to feedback a few things from the table at the back, where we were talking about the South being a healthy place for people to grow up. And it's interesting because we kind of started the conversation, kind of started and ended in similar places in terms of neurodiverse young people. So colleagues from Sparkle were talking to us a lot about the needs of young people with autism and how that can be thought through, built in, creating more provision, but also thinking about what that looks like in terms of the development of new facilities and spaces so that they are mindful of those needs. A lot of conversation then around support for the voluntary sector in terms of provision, in terms of a lot of work that they're doing, challenges of funding with a lot of that in terms of the kind of patchiness of provision, whether that's just basic early years or whether that's holiday provision. And then we ended up thinking, a colleague from Medhead School speaking about just the general high level of mental health need and need to support young people who are just struggling in terms of general mental health, support not to get a bit stuck within their own spaces and to be able to access support to move beyond that. So really kind of helpful conversations there about some of those needs in the area. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask Pat to come up, who's been helping facilitate one of the tables. Then Pat is going to lead us into, with Jonathan, a bit of a conversation about some of the work that they've been doing. So if you want to start with a bit of feedback, Pat, and then we can lead into some of the stuff that you've prepared. Thank you.
That's fine, thank you. I helped facilitate the nought to fives provision, looking at identifying what the needs were. And one of the biggest gaps that we had was looking at Saturday and Sunday provision. You know, we talk about seven day a week provision, an awful lot of work taking place Monday to Friday, but Saturday and Sunday, very limited, that really jumped out at us. And really, we all know what some of the problems are within the area, that was one of the things. And the second one was storage and facilities, you know, buildings, very limited with buildings, we seem to be fighting for space wherever we go. Many challenges, particularly on Gleedless Valley in terms of getting accessibility for to operate groups, I think they do really well with it. One of the other challenges that was raised was in relation to the half provision and the inequality with it and the problems we face in terms of getting families to fully access it. Some people not able to overcome the barriers in terms of the application process, and family hubs do a wonderful job and best start at trying to help people. Just in terms of the full family approach, there's conversations in relation to groups that we have, some work with babies until they can walk and then they have to be moved on, where they felt there was a better offer, where they could work nought to five and there's a continuum. A big part of the work was about social isolation, getting people outside of the houses and back into the community. So they're the key things really that we discussed. One of the opportunities for us is looking at some containers, we've got some containers up at Hurdings Park and Sharnock, and we felt we could better utilise them for use with groups. And there's some good news, there's some work taking place up the back of Spots, we're hoping to have a naturalistic play area opening shortly. So that was really helpful. So that's it really in terms of the nought to fives. Jonathan, would you like to come up and join me for a minute?
Tonight? Hi, my name's Jonathan Roberts, I work at Sharrow Community Forum. I've been asked tonight just to talk a little bit about what we're doing down there, but I think more importantly, some of the work that Patrick and ourselves are doing in terms of the Sheffield Play Partnership and tried to build provision together across the city and enact some good practice and to embed good practice across the city. So we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to say, I don't know what you're going to keep for us, but we'll tell you when we... Oh, that's it. So just to give you a little bit of history in terms of the Sheffield Play Partnership, in 2012, 2013, we didn't have a lot of money in the local authority, we had two adventure playgrounds, and we didn't have the money to operate them anymore, so it looked like we were going to have to close them down with reduced budgets. The libraries, we were looking to get volunteers to run and operate them just due to the situation we was in with austerity, and Firdin Recreation Centre was looking to be closed because we didn't have the resources. So Jonathan up at Sharrow supported a group to take over the operational activity in terms of Sharrow. In Pittsmoor, we had to create a group pretty quickly, and we set up a group to find funding to run the adventure playground. And in fairness to Jonathan, nearly bankrupt Sharrow Community Forum, holding on to the vital resource that is Highfield Adventure Playground, and it serviced thousands and thousands of children, really helped us create some really good quality people that contribute vastly to the city. In Pittsmoor, we were fortunate, we found some money and we was able to secure funding, we found quarter of a million pound from a benefactor, and you know, it seems to have flourished and grown in terms of Pittsmoor. So what we decided was, we needed to come together as a collective to look at how we could safeguard play in the city. All of a sudden, this play wasn't important, so children, basically we're saying children weren't really important, we needed to do something about it. So we created a mutual A group called Sheffield Play Association, and that was around 2015. And it was a loose group of people that met, Sharrow Forum, Friends of Richmond Park, Pittsmoor Adventure Playground, looking at how we could best work collectively together to share where resources were available and to work together to help provide services across the city. So it was a real decent vehicle for us. So from that play association, it moved along and it progressed and it became a play partnership. So the play partnership functioned and it met regularly. And then two years ago, we were very fortunate to be working alongside the Community Youth Service, and they allocated about £100 grand to look at play in general and what we could do in terms of developing some capacity. And we started to work and start to identify needs really. And we ran a pilot project in Woodthorpe because it was very understerved. And the challenge we've got across the city, play, has not been seen as really as important as we'd like. Now, I'm going to, I'm sorry, you shouldn't really put me up here, I'm going to be quite political of it, because of the austerity, you know, I think we've deconstructed a lot of the positive work that's happened for generations. You know, I've been involved in play and play work and working in communities for over 30 years, and we've had great times, and we've tried to create an infrastructure for communities. And people in this room, there's quite a lot of people in this room that I've had the pleasure to work with, and we've worked hard and we've seen people from nought to 19 develop, but it's been nothing short of a challenge. So last year, we got allocated in March, a couple of hundred grand to look at the city. So all of a sudden, we've come out of these dark days and we said, yeah, play's really important, what are we going to do about it?
Yeah, I think the key was, we call it models of best practice, just because they were established, more than anything else. So it was just using, oh, thank you, it was using the core teams from Pittsmoor, Highfield Adventure Playground, MASTA are quite key to all of this, because they've developed play, work, training over the last eight to 10 years, so they're well versed on that. So it was utilising some of the skills that are already in place and actually then creating a central hub where we could actually work with universities, both universities and Play Wales to deploy and develop this work across the city. And what we loosely dubbed was development areas, and I think Gleedless was one of those areas. And I'm going to point to Emma again here, because Emma is a classic example of how you can actually embed good practice and empower local people by actually supporting it, because it was Emma's enthusiasm and she galvanised on her own virtually and got things moving. So it was for the play partnership to have some resources, it was best to go, we'd say, right, Emma, let's give you some resource and help you develop that play, and let's develop you and develop the organisation. As a result, Emma set up a kick in the area. So it's just one example that we're going to always use, sorry, Emma, we're going to keep using you as an example, of how you can harness people's enthusiasm. It doesn't always have to be about money, but actually creating the right resources, the right infrastructure. So that's what we've been doing over the last 10 months really, is starting to play in areas that perhaps, play, wrong word, work in areas that perhaps have got a dearth of play or have just had, just haven't had the right elements to actually enact and get underway. So using examples like Emma is like actually dropping in and going to other areas as well. So we've used, there's been a couple of, we've had what we've loosely called play wardens that dropped into different areas of the city to actually support local infrastructure of people like Emma. So that's where we're at at the moment.
And just in terms of it, obviously, we've got a change in government and that's been a welcome change. I'm sorry, I think we really need to start connecting with people. In Sheffield, we're really suffered in the last few years. Play England and Sport England will look at reimagining play across the UK, well, across England. And they were looking at spaces and places and what the workforce looks like, workforce development and what the provision, so what does the offer look like? Well, if you start going around the city, it's very limited in terms of what we offer. We started to develop capacity, we started to bang the drum for play. So we started to look at training, introductions. What we want is to get people outside of the flats, outside of the homes, back into the street, back into community, centre place. We work closely with a whole range of partners, Sheffield City Trust, University of Sheffield, Sheffield Hallam, locally, we've got two sessions taking place with the junior club up on Low Edges, we've got pop-up play here locally, and we've been going visiting best practice, because for us, where we've got to start thinking is we've got to train the workforce. You know, if we said we got a million pounds and we wanted, say, 50 youth workers or 30 play workers, we wouldn't have the people impulse with the skills to deal with some of the problems we've got in society. So we've been doing a lot of scoping out and we're working quite closely with leaders in the field, Play Wales, and we're looking to get accreditation. And if we secure that, we'll be the accreditation centre for the UK, because there's not one in England, we're that far behind, which is a challenge. But I must tell you, over the last 12 months, it's been amazing in terms of the work up the road, up at the top of the valley. Sparkle are working on a wonderful project, Leashes over there, looking at how we can make things more inclusive. You know, locally with the local partnership on Gleedless Valley is second to none. You know, we've got about 10 different members, we've got full council support, support of the LAC, support of Healy Development Trust, Local Tara, Family Hubs, Youth Service. And for us, it's about getting the connectivity, because I think people have stopped talking and we need to get better at it, and we need to get on with action and delivering. I know lots of people are disillusioned and fed up with things.
At our table, we have a bit of a different picture, because Jock here is talking about being on lapdog there, near the John Gold pub, just saying how his action is just like a desert, it's just...
Yeah.
So it's just like a different picture, that we've been there a lot of years.
Yeah, it's only happened in the last 12 months, looking at the training in the parliament.
We've only just...
We've only just started, Jock, and in fairness, I've been to see you a few times and I've been out to some of the, to the fundays that you do, and that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Well, and this is the whole point, isn't it? Where there isn't anything happening, we need to make sure it does. And so some of the resources, making sure it's getting to the right places. So this is why Patrick's doing the job he's doing, so he's meeting up with people like yourself so we can actually identify the hotspots, the places where it's under...
Obviously, the master plan for the state of shock is that this game has...
Yeah.
...hotspots, you know, that we're not going to cross the line. That's the first thing I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That has beauty.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. See, I don't feel qualified to talk on the physical aspect, but what I do feel qualified to talk on the training that we're doing, you know, we need to upskill people so that they're comfortable outside and in the doors and in the streets, and we started that process recently.
It'll be a slow burn though, won't it? Because if you've had 20 years of austerity or whatever you've got with nothing happening...
Ah, but here, we've come straight out and put a worker in with the first bit of money that we've got. We've made that commitment straight away, because we know that it needs that investment, it needs that work, we need people on the ground that know the stuff.
So 10 months in, but we've got, hopefully, we're going to move that forward. And hopefully you'll see some changes in the next 12 months. I hope so, because that's what we're here, I hope, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we do, and we've got people that are going to be contributing much more. The message about the valley has gone far and wide, you know, and I know that the universities are really eager to, I've seen some strategic developments and there's resources coming in, but people want action on the valley, I'm very clear on it, I'm sure the elected members are clear on it.
The actual play?
No.
Absolutely.
No, 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 and that's what it needs, it needed a good look at itself if I'm honest, Jock, and I think it has had a look at itself and it's repositioned itself to say, hang on, we're open for business. If I come back here in 12 months and we haven't got a whole heap of activity, you know what I mean, you can throw potatoes at me.
We'll tell you where he lives so you can go get him later.
So anyway, Jonathan, so these are some of the areas where we've been.
These are just some of the notions now, it's about building that infrastructure across the city, where it is actually for pinpointing areas that desperately need it. We were going to show a whole load of slides about where we were and what we'd got to, but I'm not sure when you haven't got any money here, you want to hear them like, we've actually gained a lot of money in Sharrow. So, but all I need to say about that is, oh, this is the model we're moving forward, so we're just moving to the next iteration, next stage, if you like. So the man... so we're just moving to the next iteration, next stage if you like, so the management system, but also the key bit now is infrastructure developments, we're making sure people are trained locally, there are local jobs that may be available through the funding, so at the moment we're making a big ask through city councils, some of the, through the community youth teams and other teams that have supported us before, we're asking a big ask for the next 12 months, so that we can actually get this delivered, because we've got to get this on the next stage to make a difference. So that's kind of what that's about. Again, it's just working with these other bits really, it's just working with other and connecting up services really, because if you bring all services to one spot, you've got a better chance of delivering something, so that's the whole idea of this stuff.
And I think we made, I think in the nine months we made a good start, but we've got more to do, we're not complacent in terms of the responsibilities, and Jonathan alluded to, on the Sharrow Adventure Playground, they brought in 2.5 billion, we're hoping to set that up as a family hub, and there's been some master planning done with the park, and we've got some elected members who've been very supportive of us to enable that to take place, which we really appreciate, but it's took a bit of time.
I think Sharrow needs to work from, because it's smaller.
Yeah, and it's took a bit of time, hasn't it, to get to where we need to in Sharrow?
Yeah.
So thank you for listening to us, anyway.
We've not called it a good word. We've said enough.
Okay, we've escaped death by PowerPoint, thank you very, very much indeed for that, a great double act, thanks very much, of course, thank you. Thank you very much, Patrick and Jonathan. We're now going to proceed with the formal part of the meeting, so we'll ask if there are any apologies for absence, I think we've got Sophie Thompson and everyone else is here. There are no items that require the exclusion of the press and public. Can I ask if any member wishes to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? Nope, so if I can go to the minutes of the previous meeting, if I can ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the last meeting held on the 3rd of December, or take silence as a sent or thumbs up, thank you very much indeed, and we'll now move on to the Local Area Committee Budget Report, hand over to Dave Look, who will present the finance report that sets out the spending decisions made by the Community Services Manager in consultation with the LAC Chair and in accordance with the delegation granted by the South Local Area Committee at its meeting in October 2024.
Thank you, Chair, so just a few quick slides, just to set the area committee's budget this year in context and just give a little bit of an update.
Thank you.
So we start with your area committee having a £100,000 budget this year, and earlier within this council year, the decision was taken to do a couple of things, one was to divide that budget along ward lines, so it's £25,000 per ward, and the other was to agree a delegation where outside of these meetings, sums of up to £10,000 can be agreed in conjunction with the Chair, so that basically means we're able to get business done in between these formal meetings, so that's kind of where we're starting from. So everything that I'm doing tonight and the next few slides is reporting back spend that has already been agreed, working with the ward members and in conjunction with the LAC Chair, so it's basically a bit of a, where are we up to with the budget this year? Thank you. So there's a few things here you'll see for Graves Park Ward, so some further spend that's been agreed was further work to support the development of the High Street work, there's a lot of work that's been taking place over the last couple of years, and that's going to fund some planters and some trees, there's some funding there to support the work that's been happening in the Graves Park Pavilion and particularly the local groups that use that, support for the St Paul's Church Food Bank and the Cherobics Group, which meets in Norton Lees and has really been developing a lot in the last couple of years in terms of the number of local people it supports, and then you'll see in some of the slides, work to support a youth organisation called Always An Alternative, which a number of the wards have funded, and in this case, it was a smaller amount because of being able to put other pots towards that, so that's Graves Park Ward. Gleedless Valley, again, you'll see Always On Alternative, who've actually got a youth bus, we were having a look at it a couple of hours ago, and they're out and about, they're actually out and about tonight doing that youth work. Other things supported within this ward were some music lesson support for Banquid Primary School, and two of the toddler groups that meet in different parts of the valley, you'll be aware Gleedless Valley is a big place with different, we need to have provision in different parts of the community, and so there's support for a group that meets in Newfield Green, but also a group that meets up at Gaunt. Moving on to Beechfin Green Hill, support for the Grace Food Bank in the work that it's doing to support local people, some further street art, the LAC has commissioned a number of pieces of street art over the last few years, and this will be in the garage site in Jordan Thorpe, support for Friends of Baitmore Park in improvements they're making, and again, some support for Always On Alternative. In terms of Never Edge Ward, there was nothing formal to bring to this report, but what we did at the last meeting was, the councillors agreed to put their budget towards local parks improvements, and it wasn't in time for this report, but we've been able to support some work to redevelop the cricket nets at Mount Pleasant Park, and also some refurbishment of a pocket park at Staveley Road, so that will formally come in the next meeting in terms of the papers, but those things have been agreed by the Never Edge councillors. So the final thing just to tell you about is that we have opened the LAC consultation, there are paper copies around, there are posters with the QR codes and the links, please would you fill one of those in, please would you tell other people about it? It's a very quick, simple survey, but we want to hear what people's experience of living in the south of Sheffield is, what's positive, what can we improve, so please do fill that in and please do spread the word around that, that will be open until the end of the school Easter holidays, and when we have our first meeting in the summer, probably in June, then we'll bring back the results and the kind of reshaped priorities for the South LAC that's arising out of that. So all of that spend, Chair, is just for members formally to note in terms of spend under delegated powers, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. So yeah, the recommendation is that the South Local Area Committee notes the funds spent under delegated powers since the December 2024 South LAC meeting. We'll now move on to public questions and petitions, we haven't received any questions in advance, if you do want to ask a question, please can I ask that you wait for the microphone to get to you so that people can hear it, please do clearly state your name and which area you're from, if you're representing a particular organisation, please let us know who that is. If we're unable to answer any questions tonight, we will provide a written response, in which case obviously we'll need your contact details. Does everyone have any questions? Wow, silence, obviously all talked out, well, all these remains for me to say is, thank you all very much indeed for coming, thank you for taking part in the consultation that we're doing and bringing your experience to it, it is very, very valuable, as Dave said, we will be collating all of this and it will be feeding into the work we're doing in the South LAC in the future, and we're getting back to you in terms of that, and we will be looking at the priorities of the South LAC, and certainly this will feed directly into that, so all that remains to be is, thank you very much indeed for coming, have a safe journey home, the next South LAC public meeting will be on the 25th of March at 6 p.m., venue to be at TBA, thank you all very much indeed, good night.